Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I try to win the win to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and welcome to the May 2022 Meeting of the Kent Planning Board. Let me remind everybody, when you come up to speak, sign in, and speak clearly into the microphone. Tell us who you are. Members, have you all read the minutes from last month, from April?
Yes.
Affirmative.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll move that.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
I'm losing my mind. Dennis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Is there anyone here from New York City DEP? Please, come up and talk to us.
Speak to us.
Sure. I'm Bart Catarino, representing the New York City DEP, watershed forester, here for erosion control permit on our planned timber harvest project on Churchill Road. The plan is to thin about 55 acres of timber with the purpose of removing the trees of poor form and vigor, retaining the best trees on the site, and releasing young seedlings and saplings, regeneration of oak and hickory that is on the site currently. We've had our project through town review for several months, and we're at the public hearing stage.
Very good, thank you. We're going to open this to public hearing. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yep.
John?
Aye.
Aye, Stephen? And I vote aye, too. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Please, come up. You have to use the microphone, sir. Please state your name and where you live. And if you have a chance to sign in, please.
My name is William Frohn. I live at 103 Churchill Road. I think we're the only residents on the road where this is going to happen. And I'm just worried that they may come in, take what they want, leave a mess, and leave. Plus, there's apparently going to be a lot of noise, traffic, and so on. And I'm just wondering what it's going to be like.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to tell them what it's going to be like after you're done?
Yes. What it's going to be like?
Please, into the microphone?
During the project, as I stated in the past, it will occur in the winter months at the most frozen times of year, because that's the best times to do logging projects and also to accommodate the restrictions on cutting trees for the northern longer bat and Indiana bat. And so they'll be there. Right at the top of the site is where the log landing is going to be. There will be a road that we put in on our property, about 12 feet wide, that comes out to Churchill Road. There's an existing entrance already there. We're just going to reinforce that with geotextile and stone. So there'll be a little roadwork on the front end on our property to make sure we're not tracking debris out onto Churchill Road. And then during the project, there will be some heavy machinery movement. That'll be intermittent, really depending on the weather. If we have a really good stretch of weather, this could all take four weeks. We had our last project on Horse Pound Road. Horse Pound Road? Yeah, Horse Pound Ridge on Rhinebeck Road. That took five weeks. They were in and out of there last January and February. And so it could be, yes, four weeks of noise. This project is half the size of the project on Rhinebeck Road. So, yes, about four weeks of noise, and you probably will hear less than you think, because they're going to be working... Most of the site is far downhill from your house. So they're going to start at the bottom. They'll probably start at the bottom and work their way up. And you'll probably hear the top quarter of the site, really, I would think. There'll be probably a few guys out with chainsaws that you hear only during... Only during... What's in my plan? Generally, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM is the working hours. And if they come in with a harvester, then that's pretty much a piece of excavator equipment that has a harvesting head on it that mechanically fells the trees, and that's even less noise. And that's what they used on the Horse Pound Ridge project up on Rhinebeck Road. So really, I think the impacts will be minimal, and you'll be surprised how little you notice what's going on there.
And the town will occasionally inspect the site.
And that's the other thing. We're, as the DEP, we're there very frequently, keeping an eye on what's going on on the site. So this isn't, we just set these guys loose and have them cut timber and collect the money. Absolutely not, because we're interested in protecting the water quality, protecting the quality of the forest on the site, because that's our job as foresters for the DEP. We are not in it for the money, in reality. We make more money on the water rates in the city. This is all about keeping the forest healthy for clean water, for the watershed.
Please speak into the microphone.
No, this is... No, and this isn't clearcutting, that's for sure.
We need both people to speak into the microphone.
Sure.
You know, have to speak... Can you repeat what you said before into the microphone? Is it all going to be on the record, for the public record? Sorry, sorry to be a pest. It's okay.
You had asked, is it going to be clearcut?
Yeah, you had asked if we were doing a clearcut there, and that's absolutely not what's happening. I actually marked every tree that they're going to take myself, and it's not all of them.
I know there's like a buffer zone, like near my property or something.
Yeah.
You can't go near it. There are some big trees down there, and it's a mess.
Right.
We're going to get any of those, or just?
Um, it's possible. Well, one thing in that area, there's a vernal pool there.
Yeah.
So we don't want to disturb the area to the east and south of the vernal pool. To the north and west, that's a big rock there. So that's not a huge issue. But to the east and south of the vernal pool, in the immediate vicinity, they are allowed to take any downed wood that they want, but it may not have value at this point, because that was four years ago now that that timber was down, so some of that may stay.
At the top of my property, near the driveway, there are a couple of big fell trees that got uprooted.
Oh, yeah.
And they're laying there, and it's, right, pretty ugly. They're going to take those, you think?
Are they from our property?
Yes. But they're close to my property.
They're close to your property.
Yeah, I have some trees near my house that need to be removed.
It depends if they were from our property, and they fell over your property line?
No, it's still in the property.
It's still on our property line?
But I could see it.
Yeah, I think I know what you're talking about.
Couple of them right near the top of the driveway.
Yeah. They may be taking those, they might not. I can try and get them to. That's, you know.
My other problem is Churchill Road. I don't know if anybody's ever traveled on yet. Recently, it's been fixed, but every time it rains, there's huge potholes. If they're going to bring large equipment in there, they'll break their trucks or...
Right, so here's what's happening on Churchill Road. They're not going to travel the entire length of the road. It's not practical for a log truck or any of their equipment. I understand that, and that's why we are not going to be traveling the entire length of the road.
Or I think we need to have anybody who's speaking on a microphone?
Yeah. Who started?
I don't know what to say.
I don't know what you said.
She had asked about travel on Churchill Road because of its poor condition and because after weather events, the condition deteriorates.
Right.
And so we addressed this with the highway supervisor, and we will only be traveling on 600 feet of Churchill Road, going to the east... Well, it's the northeast of the project.
Towards Pax Slip?
Towards Pax Slip Road. So the trucks are going to come in from Pax Slip Road, and they're going to go out Pax Slip Road.
You better send them a notice.
Is it? I think... All right.
I think the people in Pax Slip Road, I think, will be happy about that.
Well, these trucks should be no more disruptive than a regular garbage truck, your oil delivery trucks. And it's not going to be a flood of trucks coming out of this job. It's two trucks per day while they're operating, probably about 20 trucks total the whole job. That's not much.
Wait, wait. Does the board would like to hear your comment?
I'm Joseph Sarasulo. I live at 120. That road is a disaster. Who's going to maintain the road while this goes on?
Well, we have arranged with the town for our loggers to do any grading of that road in front of our project site, because that's only fair.
All right, so you're going to pick up the cost of that?
Yeah, we have an arrangement through our permits with the town that... And we give our loggers a security... Our loggers have to pay a security bond to us. So if that's not done satisfactorily, they don't get their security bond back. So they're going to do it.
Okay, so you're telling us that that road is going to be maintained?
Yes.
We're not going to have any divots, dirt all over the place?
There won't be dirt, definitely not be dirt all over the place.
Because the road sucks right now in planning.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is John Andrews. I'm the engineer to the planning board. As Bart said, there's probably two levels here. The first level is, the first person Bart actually encountered on this job was the highway superintendent. He has followed every direction that Mr. Othmer has set. He's the one that gave him the route. It's severely restricted. It goes from his site to Pax Slip and out, that's it. He does have an arrangement. They have an obligation to maintain the road, any damage they have to repair. New York City DEP posts what they call a letter of assurance. This board has accepted them in the past, and basically, it puts the full weight of the DEP behind us. So in other words, they don't get out of this permit unless and until all damages have been restored and repaired to the satisfaction of myself, the town's environmental consultant, and more specifically, the highway superintendent.
What about we that live on it? What about us? Don't we get a say on how the road is maintained at the end? We live on the road.
Sir, you have elected officials, you have a highway superintendent. He's the man you have to speak to.
Spoke to him, it took forever to get the road fixed.
Sir, I can't, I can't.
Okay.
Alls I can tell you is, we've worked with these folks before. They've never left us hanging. I don't expect they'll leave us hanging this time, because quite honestly, that letter of assurance is backed by the full faith and credit of New York City.
I understand that, but the question is that your highway superintendent, I've called him numerous times, until the last time that this gentleman said something to him, I'm sure it was you, all of a sudden, we got the road fixed this past Monday. It's been like a minefield, 127 potholes, two of which I lose a truck in.
We're here...
And you know that, you were there, I saw you.
We're dealing with this particular permit that's in front of us?
Right.
I can't speak for Mr. Othmer.
My concern is that you're putting big trucks on this road. A logging truck is not a light truck.
No.
Okay. I was in the construction business for 50 years.
Yeah.
Okay, a logging truck is a large truck. It's a heavy truck.
Yes.
That road cannot take that kind of abuse on a daily basis. So are we going to have this maintained on a daily basis?
If necessary, they will make repairs on a regular basis. That is correct. Now, is it going to be perfect? I can't guarantee that.
Nothing's perfect.
And the other benefit is that it's going to be winter.
The other benefit is that it's going to be winter.
Okay, but you're mentioning you're going to plant. Are you going to plant it? How can you plant in the winter?
We're not planting.
You're not going to refurbish the forest that you take out?
No, we're only taking select trees.
Okay.
From the standing forest, and there are already naturally reproducing trees on the site.
So you're not going to do any planting to reestablish a forest again?
It's not necessary.
Okay.
Because there's already seedlings and saplings vigorously growing on that site.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Bar with the town environmental consultant. I think what we've done in the past, and I'm hoping Bart will agree to do this, with respect to the roads, is we've asked for the... Taller, like this, or more volume? We've asked the applicant... Is that better? Asked the applicants in the past, provide some baseline photographs of the existing conditions of the road. That way, there's a possibility that if there is some damage, which is extremely unlikely, but if there is some damage to the road, there's documentation of the condition before and after, and that way, it can be addressed accordingly, either from DEP doing it involuntarily basis, or utilizing the bond if required. And we've done that in the past, and I think that's something that, you know, if you want, one of us can go and take the pictures, Bart can take the pictures, and we set up a baseline information, so we know the condition of the road before it starts, and then after they're finished, take a look at that again and see if there's any repair to work that's required. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Is that good, gentlemen? Have we answered your questions?
I don't have any more questions.
All right, thank you. Yes. I will.
My name is Teresa Froh. My...
Please speak into the microphone.
My name is Teresa Frohn. I live at 103 Churchill Road. I'm his spouse. I have a question about where exactly this entry road will be.
Yes.
Because the map is like, not very clear.
Dennis, you have a map on you? I have one, too, but...
Oh, he hasn't.
Yes.
Where's my house?
Your house is here. So these trucks will go here, from here, out this way.
Whose house would be over there?
I'm not sure. He hasn't raised... I have talked to him, but... Here.
It's right on this road.
Mm-hmm.
Torn right out of the ground. Now, if you're going to do all this work, and it's on your property, why wouldn't you remove those? Aren't they a fire hazard?
I mean, the forests don't readily burn in this part of the world, and that's just really a natural part of the forest, and something we're actually trying to prevent through this timber harvest, because we're trying to remove the poorly growing, unhealthy trees that may fall over. So, and any trees that are over now, that's really just a natural occurrence. If they have value, you know, the loggers...
What is value? They're on the ground, they're dead.
Well, if they still have sound wood in them, they can be milled into wood products. So if the logger determines that he can get value out of them...
But I thought you said you're earning this for money.
But that's just how... But we still have to sell the logs. I mean, that's how it works.
Well, I'm totally opposed to it if all that junk is still going to be on the road.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who has a question? Members, any questions? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Stephen, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
John?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Samantha?
Sabrina.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too.
All right, thank you, Phil.
The public hearing is closed. Do we have to do the erosion control?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? If you are satisfied, I think basically, gentleman has addressed most of our concerns. The letter of assurance has been reviewed by the town, the planning board's attorney, and found to be acceptable. It's the same as been used in other circumstances. Highway Superintendent Othmer is relatively satisfied, so our recommendation is, since the public hearing has been closed, we recommend that the remaining project be referred to the planning board consultants to be handled administratively, and we would further recommend that you accept the letter of assurance and send it to the town board for their review and acceptance as well.
And the erosion control, pardon?
Once there's a couple more details that need to be pulled together, then we'll get that all finalized and be able to sign off in the near future.
All right, thank you, John. Can I get a motion to move this to administrative track and also to send the letter to the town board to accept the letter of acceptance?
Well, I just have a quick question.
Yeah, sure, please.
I'm sorry. So what Bruce was saying about taking pictures of the road before... Sorry, what Bruce was saying about taking pictures of the road before, like, how do we include that in this?
So if the applicant agrees to do that, as part of the administrative processes, this is on public record, so we would wait to get that before we would recommend chairman signing on the erosion plan and finalizing it. So hopefully, the pictures can come shortly, and we can go out there and meet with the applicant if they so choose to do so, and make sure we get enough photographs and get that as the public record.
Okay.
So that should be part prior to the chairman signing off on the permit.
Okay, I would just, I hope that that puts them at ease a little bit, in hopes that, you know, it'll get fixed, if anything does happen.
Yep, okay. Thanks, Bart.
I just want everybody to bear in mind, we're going to do a series of photographs now, close and issue the permit.
Okay.
Bart's going to have to give us notice of when they're actually going to conduct the work, so we would expect updated photographs at that time, because the road is not static, as this gentleman will tell you. You could look at it today, and it's fine. You could come back 10 days later after a heavy rain, and it's not fine.
Okay.
So we're going to have to build that into the process. But we can add that, that's probably, that's one of the administrative tasks we'll do, we'll add a note to his plan set that those things have to be filed. He's got to give the building inspector notice, I think, of his start of work anyway, and at that same time, submit updated photographs.
Okay.
But you'll have a baseline now, you'll have the updated before they start, and then when they start, and then typically, when they give us notice that they're all done, Bruce and I will go back out there and make sure they did what they were supposed to do.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Anyone else with a question? Can I get a, once again, a motion to move this to administrative track and to send the letter of acceptance to the town board?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Sabrina?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. You have any further questions for us?
No, I'll just, I'll wait for, I guess, whatever... No, we're on Bruce and I, yeah, John, versus us.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any... Is there anyone here representing White Vernon property? Jack, it's part of the test. Now, what kind of a new-fangled gadget tree do we have this time?
They're what? Oh, okay.
That is not very efficient, at all.
Doesn't stick.
Nope, nope. Maybe just get rid of the whiteboard, just the paper. Maybe just the paper.
All right.
She left you. No, it's still... Okay.
All right.
All right.
Way to go.
That took a minute.
Took an engineer to do it, didn't it? It's hard, it's hard. My name is John Correll. I'm representing the Whites and the Vernons. Mr. Vernon is here. Mr. Schilling is here to discuss the easement situation. As you've seen this before, they're building a single-family house, septic system, on 39 acres. We have health department approval, and we hope this board will put this to administrative review, assuming there are no adverse comments.
Thank you. Is there... Oh, can I get a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And Stephen, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
John?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yep.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Is there anyone here who would like to speak about this application? Don't all rush. No? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
And a second.
I'll second.
And how do you vote, Hugo?
Aye.
Aye.
Dennis and Stephen and John?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too.
Don't take the final vote yet.
I'm sorry?
Don't take the final vote yet on closing that public hearing. One of the... Everything here, since there was no substantive public comment...
Right.
The only real concern that Bruce and I have, and perhaps we can get an update from the attorney, is the easement. We would, DEP, on one side of the fence, when you deal with them on what they require, for instance, the logging, are quite cooperative. When they're not, they're not always so cooperative on the other side of the fence. So our concern is, unless and until we have the details of that easement, and it matches everything up, we don't have a final plan, so to speak. So it would be our recommendation that you adjourn the public hearing until we get that easement squared away, and at least have a draft that our attorney can look at and say, yea, you know, satisfies our requirements or not.
So adjourn it till next month?
Yeah, unless it's going to take longer, but I'll leave it to this gentleman.
As it involves an agency, does it really matter, since we're going to be, we're getting comments back and forth with the DEP and not the public?
It matters, sir, because access to this property is over the easement. It needs to be improved, it needs to meet town standards, and it needs to be...
No, I agree. I just don't think we need public comment. Yeah, that's all I mean.
There might be, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, since this is impacting the DEP and DEP only, so I was saying, since it involves a public agency, they're going to give us our comments anyways, so...
Good evening. My name is Bill Schilling, and I represent the applicant here. I understand the concern about the easement. There is a slight deviation between the traveled way, which is dirt, macadam road, and the written right-of-way that the DEP granted to our client. My client did receive zoning board approval for the road frontage variance that was necessary.
Could you hold on a second? I can't hear a thing. This is people outside talking like crazy.
Turn that microphone on.
Mine? Thank you, Bruce. All right, please, go ahead.
As part of your record, you do have a meets and bounds description for the traveled way that was given to you by surveyor David Odell, and it really is a slight deviation from... And it really is a slight deviation from the written right-of-way that the DEP granted. And it was just over a period of years that trucks and, and vehicles, border health vehicles, used it to, to, to access the property. I suggest to you respectfully that you do have a copy of the meets and bounds description, which is going to be, in my opinion, based on conversations that I've had with the DEC and the DEP. By the way, DEC is involved as well, too, because there's a conservation easement adjoining the property. So, um, to try to navigate between those two agencies on this thing hasn't been easy. But I do have a, a contact with the DEC and the DEP. They're negotiating it now, and my, my understanding is, they're in agreement that the traveled way, which is really, really close to the, the deeded right-of-way, will be approved. The other thing that we're working on with the DEP is, of course, utility access, which for some reason was not provided in the written right-of-way. So, um, there are ministerial things to be continued and finalized, and we're on it. We have a contact for the DEP and the DEC. They are meeting, or they have met this week on it, I haven't got the results. But my agents for both agencies say this, this is getting done, and I can only tell you government moves at a pace that I'm sure you're well aware of, but I have contacts. And again, the difference between the traveled way and the written right-of-way is really not significant. The only reason we hope to do that is because the traveled way is in existence. It's 50-foot wide, the zoning board granted a variance on a 50-foot right-of-way granted by the DEP, there's a slight deviation. I don't know whether the outcome of the gentleman's comments was for a, a, advocacy for a delay. I respectfully request, I think that public hearing can be closed. The, the air, the, um, issue of the right-of-way is, for all intents and purposes, provided the zoning board granted a variance on it, and I, you know, my clients went under contract for this property in 2020. It's a 39-acre piece, and we're proposing a one-family dwelling. So, with all due respect to this board, I know you have a job to do, and I understand the consultant's concerns, but respectfully, I request that the public hearing be closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, I learned a long time ago, never argue with an attorney, so I'm, I'm not going to do that. I, I agree with his, the meets and bounds exist on the map. The language that we have been provided with has a right of ingress and egress only. There are requirements, there are improvements that need to be physically made to that road to make, meet the town standard. This gentleman also mentioned utilities, none of which appear to be permitted activities. It's not, I, I'm not quibbling with where the road is. I, I think we're all agreed, they're going to put it where it is. What we're, want to be assured of is that everything that's ancillary to that, the utilities, the road improvement, the other obligations and responsibilities that go with it, are properly enumerated and covered in a legal instrument. And, and unless and until we see that, it kind of somewhat remains an open issue. They don't have, they've got the right of ingress and egress. You're granting them an, an approval that, that theoretically should comply with the town standards, it's an erosion and sediment control permit, runs all the way out to the road. We still don't understand, you know, we know what the scope of work is supposed to be, but they have no right to do that, so.
That's, that's our position.
So, you recommend we just adjourn it?
I, I would be more comfortable adjourning it, but again...
But, yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not avoiding to send them to administrative track. We expect them still to come back to us.
Did you see that permit?
Yeah.
They would come back to you, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, so they're going to come back anyways until, we're not, we're not avoiding to send them to administrative track.
And just, just for a, a second point, if, if in the off-chance that the DEP, DEC denies access or utility use for this existing traveled way or right-of-way, there's another small access around the corner that this property is fronted on, which if they were required to use that access of necessity, that would require them to go through a wetland area, et cetera, and that would be a different discussion, different public hearing, et cetera.
That's a different application, yeah.
So, that's why we're kind of saying, let's, let's hopefully get this all done, have it come back next month with that information that they have the access and the utility ability to, to connect and move on.
John, is there any difference between us reopening the public hearing and then adjourned it, or since we've already closed it, just opening it next month?
They have to renotice it, that's the only thing.
Is that?
It's going to burden the applicant.
Oh, all right.
This, this lot was created by the town of Kent in the subdivision, a two-lot subdivision, and then subsequent to that, the, um, the easement, I guess, was created by DEP. There had to be an easement, because there were two lots there. And the, um, it's just an oversight that the utilities weren't indicated on that easement. And if you put this to administrative review, and we can't get that utility, the right to access that, the utilities through there, somebody's getting sued. Not necessarily you guys, but maybe DEP.
And we're not, we're not going to vote to send it to administrative track, we can't do that.
Right, we can't do that yet, but, because...
So, we still expect you still to come in to the, uh, the board meetings, just not have a pu- public hearing?
The public hearing.
Oh, no, okay. But if we can close the public hearing, I guess that's...
Yeah, I...
That's what the point is.
Because they still have to come back, I understand, but they still have to come back to provide us with X, Y, and Z, they're not asking, they're not...
To be blunt, to be blunt, whether you close the public hearing or, or adjourn it to another date is almost immaterial at this point in time. If you see the easement, and there's no harm, no foul, a closed public hearing is no issue. If you get the easement, and there are some issues with it, and you need
I understand.
to reopen the public hearing, you could renotice and do it then. To satisfy these folks, there's no, you've closed the public hearing, leave it be closed until we see the easement, but there, I would not recommend an administrative track till we see that easement.
So, if there is any discrepancies on the easement, that would mean that they would have to reopen the public hearing and re...
Depending upon the order of, the magnitude, um...
They could, they could tell us.
And whether you guys are concerned about that or not.
Okay.
So, it's, it's, it's a risk, it's a very slim risk.
Very slim risk, got it.
So, I, I, I'm not, I'm...
So, just leave the public hearing closed, we're not moving...
Not a hill I'm willing to die on at this point in time. You can close the public hearing, but they have to come back to you, it's too early for administrative.
So that we, we have nothing more we need to do on?
Nothing more.
Do you have any more questions for us?
So, are you going to close the public hearing?
We do.
We did, we already did.
Closed.
You have, why do you, you have to be quick around here.
Phil did. Phil asked for the motion.
Well, you still need to.
Yeah, we already did it. He, he said...
Well, I don't know if we're allowed to say.
You want me to do it again for your, for you, or you do it?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
In a second. I'll second. And, uh, Hugo?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yeah.
John?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Take it easy.
Now, John, I'm, I, I'm, I'm at a loss here, because, first of all, I would like to see on the plan, all the adjoiningers lying between Horse Pound Road and the westerly boundary of the 39-acre parcel, okay? They're not on the map. I would like to see any documentation about that DEP conservation easement that affects the property. If there's a way of determining the limits of that conservation easement, I'd like to see them plotted on the plan. And as far as this proposed easement is concerned, I've never seen any of the proposed descriptions or anything mapped out as far as what that easement is going to be constituted of, uh, where it's going to fit into the property, um, and, and, uh, let's see, whatever remarks did I make? Yeah, that, that about covers it. Uh, the details, the descriptions of the easements, uh, where that conservation easement is, who are all the adjoiningers on there? You've got all kinds of property lines on some of the block maps, but, uh, don't know who they are.
I will show the property owners on, from the western boundary to Horse Pound Road on a map. Uh, as far as the easement, the easement goes, is the, is the, the exact same as the right-of-way, and the meets and bounds description of the easement is on the right-of-way. And beyond that, I show, I provided an inset map showing how we can put the driveway within the existing easement, but they would rather leave it on the farm road, so it's there. I'll, I'll have it for the next meeting.
I don't know, I, there's, there's something here on the plan, up by the house, but it doesn't tell me what it is. It, it doesn't have any meets and bounds as far as the proposed easement on it, by the looks of it. Do we have title work on this property?
Yes, we have a survey, it's, the surveyor...
Now, do we have title work? We got a survey, but I don't know how good that is.
You have a title report, right? Yeah.
Who owns that right-of-way?
I think DEP owns the right-of-way.
We think?
And there's an easement over it.
We, we got, we got to have some, some, uh, proof of legalities here of, of, uh...
Again, this is...
What's on the ground out there, John?
Again, this was, this was a subdivision that was, that was approved by the town of Kent.
We need to, we, we need some justification.
I'll, I'll get that information for you for the next meeting
Yeah, yeah.
in a cover letter.
Yeah, I'd like to see it anyways, but, but, uh, you know, if we're going to approve this project, we're going to want to know that the, the, the legalities of it are clean also.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
So, yeah, take me to heart here, and, and, uh, we'll, we'll complete the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, show where that easement is, what the description is, adjoiningers, where the conservation easement, how much, how much ground does that conservation easement cover?
I think it covers the whole property.
Oh, my.
But that's something that, it, we don't really understand it fully. We've, we've been dealing with DEP, and we're dealing with DEC, and we'll, when we get this, we just had the me, a meeting this week, and we'll have more specific information for the board at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay, if, if DEP can bring some information that we can get copies of, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I've dealt with both these parties, too, so.
Okay.
You know, been there, done that. And, yeah, it's enough to tear your hair off sometimes. But, uh, okay, well, that, that should bring me up to snuffle a little bit better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Um, let's go to Holly property.
My name is Robert Bradley, uh, I'm representing the Hollies, which, if you were a child of the 50s, it actually sounds kind of musical. The reason that I'm here is, uh, we've been submitting a thing for a stipulation with the town. As you are all aware, this comes out of a lawsuit with the town of Kent. And for quite a while, we've been, uh, asking for a stipulation on this, uh, an understanding between the town, the planning board, and us, that this is all we're going to build. Uh, we've been asked to do plans, and we've done them. Uh, I received, uh, this afternoon, and I, I guess yesterday afternoon, some comments on this, of which we haven't had time yet to answer. Some of the comments are things that are already done and on the plans, um, and we would certainly respond to those. The only thing I'm looking for this evening is the fact of the stipulation going to the attorney and being able to sign this and get that out of the way. The original stipulation that was given to us, we were set to sign, we were told by the consultants long ago, that as opposed to segmenting this, do everything at once. We changed our, uh, plan at that time, or the Hollies changed their plan, and did this all at once, as opposed to segmenting it. It involves 12 units, uh, I think 19, 19 units out of the 33 we're allowed to build. Uh, the only thing we wanted to do is send this to the attorney. Uh, I, on the original stipulation, changed the math on this when we decided to up the count. So, basically, the stipulation is exactly the same as it was. It puts in the stipulation the fact that we have to go to the, your board, we have to go to the city, we have to do everything else. There's no guarantee that we'll be able to get the 19 units, nor was it on the original, uh, the original stipulation. It said that it was, that we were required to go before all the boards, we were required to go, uh, before the city, um, and then we were told that we needed a substantial plan, at least of what we have, which we've, we've submitted. The comments that have come for this are best minor, and things that we can work out and get to you in June, but this stip, we would really like to settle this with the town, and we would kind of like to move on with this. Enough is enough. Uh, this has been quite a while, uh, this has been, uh, going back and forth, and I think it's time that we send it to the attorney. The attorney sends it back to us, we'll sign it, it'll go to the town board, and, uh, life will go on. But, uh, this has been months and months and months of, uh, coming, uh, before you. Not that I love coming down on Thursday nights, this is a, a wonderful place to be, and certainly an education.
Well, you, you leave always before the party starts.
I, I understand that, maybe I'll stay tonight if there's something controversial coming up. But basically, that's it, I mean, that's all I have. I have plans I can put up on your lovely board that doesn't work here. But that's not what I'm, that's not what we're looking for. All we want to do is get this sent to the attorney, have the attorney send it back to us. These simple questions that are on here from the three consultants, we will certainly answer by June, uh, some of them we will answer in the negatives, some of them we will supply, some of them have been done already. So, that's all I'm asking for.
Thank you. John?
Unique experience, I don't disagree with the applicant. Sorry, unique experience, I don't disagree with the applicant. Um, we, uh, as Mr. Bradley said, they did submit plans. Um, in, in, in basic, I think what we have found is that the plans that have been submitted to date are satisfactory for determining the unit count that belongs in the final stipulation. There are some minor adjustments, I've identified some, Bruce has identified some, Liz has identified some. What we would suggest at this point in time, um, is that the information provides sufficient documentation to evaluate the development and complete the stipulation. There are seven exist, I just want to go through the basics, so you understand them. There are seven existing residential units with a total of 11 bedrooms. They are proposing 12 additional two-bedroom units, and then one addition to an existing house to add another bedroom. At the end of the day, there will be 19 units with 36 bedrooms, providing everything works out. That is not a guarantee. So, what our recommendation to the board is this evening, is that you authorize Jeff Battistoni, your attorney, to complete the stipulation and put it in a final form. We would further ask that the applicant make the minor revisions to the plan set that they have, because what we intend to do is attach that plan set to the stipulation, and everything's married together, there's no questions. So, what we would, what we would hope is that these all would come together at the June meeting. Jeff would get the stipulation resolved, it would come back here, you folks would nod your approval, um, these folks would be happy with it, and then it could be signed, sent to the town board, and the process, uh, the stipulation process completed, and let these people go off to the races to finalize their, um, project. So, I think, um, that's where, unless somebody else has a different opinion, that's what our recommendation would be for this evening.
Do we need to vote on this, or...
Um, it would probably be appropriate, since you're authorizing your attorney to work on your behalf, um, so I think that the, the clear authorization is, um, to authorize Jeff Battistoni to complete the SWIP, SWIP, scar, sorry, stipulation with the unit count as embodied in the current plan set.
Very good. Who would like to make a motion to authorize what was just described?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
He wants to talk.
If I just may, I just want to make one thing clear to the board and the applicant, and kind of dovetail what John said. So, the applicant requested the certain number of units as part of their original stipulation, or their second stipulation, and we have found that this conceptual plan of resource analysis pursuant to the town code is reasonably supportive of that unit count, and therefore, we're recommending to the board to approve this conceptual plan and move forward. The provides, however, is that there's a process that will be following this, that will be before the planning board for site plan approval, as well as perhaps a variety of different permits, wetland permits... of different permits, wetland permits, as well as other agencies, perhaps DEC, DEP, Board of Health, et cetera. And just to be clear, this amount that's being memorialized in the stipulation agreement may change due to permitting requirements, site plan, et cetera. I just want to make sure everybody is very clear on that, okay? Just for the record. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Questions about that, anyone?
And when you're talking about the number count, you're talking about reducing the number count potentially from where we're at today, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, but we're not going to be talking about increasing it beyond what we're authorizing here.
That was, that was why we wanted the stipulation on this, in order to make it clear that this is all that we're looking for.
This is the maximum, and it can be reduced.
This is the maximum that we were.
Because there could be geological issues that you find where you're getting into wetland.
There could be a lot of things. I mean, we've been to the DEC as a preliminary.
Yes.
There's a stream coming down through here, and there's lots of things that could happen along the way. And that's all in the original stipulation also. We understand that.
Yeah, so basically, this is what the applicant requested in terms of the unit count. The planning board requested to say, can you prove on this site that this conceptually that this site supports that unit count? The answer is within reason, yes. Okay? And then we're going to see as it works its way through if the unit count is going to be changed due to permitting or other factors.
Okay. Yep. So, I'll make that motion, Phil.
Hang on. Go ahead, Liz.
Oh.
I'll make this really quick. So there are a few things, you know, because this plan set is going to be an attachment to the stipulation, I think a little offline consultation with the engineer would be helpful, and the three of us.
Separately, sure. Questions, anyone?
No. I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
And Hugo?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yeah.
John?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I say aye, too.
Thank you. I'll see you in June.
See you in June.
See you in June.
All right. Kent Self Storage.
Sorry, I'm stealing Liz's thunder. This is basically her, but I was asked last time to figure out where the easement is. The easement has recently, as recently as today, been fully executed by the applicant, the owner. It has been returned to his attorney, and his attorney has forwarded it on to your attorney and the town board's attorney. So the next stop for that easement will be the town board. And the language is as you requested it to be. So that appears to be on its way to completion.
Very good. Thank you. Sir? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Tom Carrigan, civil engineer for the project. We are here seeking reapproval of the plan set. It's set to expire June 6th, which is ahead of your June planning board meeting, so we had to get in for this meeting. You know, we've been working towards getting the last of the comments addressed, as we just heard, the easement is moving forward. We believe we addressed most of the Zaxx accounts, and a few things are maybe left. We have to just discuss those with her, just to make sure we get them addressed to her satisfaction. So we are, as I said, we're just here tonight seeking reapproval so we can continue the process.
Very good. Thank you. Consultants?
So I'm impressed that Mr. Carrigan's here tonight, because I understand, isn't probably very comfortable to be standing or sitting. So anyway, we're here. I've prepared a resolution for reaffirmation of Seeker determination and reapprovals with conditions for site plan, steep slope, erosion control permit for V-BROCK slash Kent Self Storage. And I'm not going to bore you with the details. So page one is a recounting of a lot of the history of the project. Also, you know, stopping to just say the planning board had initiated Seeker in 2019, and then concluded Seeker in November 2019, held its public hearings and closed them, had granted final approval with conditions. And that was November 14, 2019. And then eventually, that was close to expiration. There was a letter came requesting reapproval, because it did actually expire. And then the planning board went through the process in 2020 of granting a resolution of reapproval, and then later granting two 90-day extensions of the prior reapproval in December 9, 2021. And then I go through the timeline a little bit more. I'm on page two. And then, of course, I had communication with the applicant representatives to let them know that we needed to do more things. So this resolution, starting at the bottom of page two, there's no change in the proposed action, so it reaffirms your Seeker, SECR determination of non-significance. Page three states the reasons why. And we're waiving the public hearing in this resolution that I prepared for you, and you would be granting reapproval. And then moving on to page four of six, the planning board would grant reapproval, and it would be based on the conditions enumerated, 1 through 13. And of course, condition 12 reiterates that this reapproval would expire in 12 months from this date. And that's it. So any questions?
Thank you, Liz. Bruce or John, do you have any comments about this?
No. I'm in court with Liz.
Okay. No comments here. Can I get a motion to accept this resolution?
Approve this resolution.
Approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
Phil, second.
And John, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Stephen?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for us?
Nope. Thank you for.
Thank you. Putnam Nursing and Rehabilitation Center.
Hi, Liza Josephovic, and I'm the owner of Putnam Nursing Home since 2013, when I bought it from this young lady's father.
I'm Dina Kaye. I'm the current administrator there. I've been at the facility as an employee since 1988.
Thank you. Consultants, do you want to weigh in here?
Nice to meet you, after seeing your names in emails forever. I failed to introduce myself before. My name is Liz Axelson. I serve as the planning consultant to the town of Kent Planning Board. So I've prepared a resolution for you, and I'm going to make a brief change in the middle of it, and I'll tell you about that when I get there. So because this project, Putnam Nursing and Rehabilitation, has been through a few rounds of reapproval, there's a lot of documenting of that, so the language is a little awkward. But I'm going to just get you through it as quickly as I can. So basically, starting on page one, goes through the history, talks about what the project is, zoning district, and the first set of plans, and then it also documents the steps that the planning board took to go through the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. And then also indicates that the planning board did a determination of non-significance or negative declaration on December 12, 2019. And the reasons for granting that negative declaration are listed at the bottom of page one, top of page two. And then it goes forth and talks about public hearings that were held, and lists the various approvals that were granted, freshwater wetlands, steep slopes and erosion control, final approval with conditions of site plan, discusses the original plan set that was approved at that time, and then discusses more of the project through 2020, when there was a reapproval, I'm sorry, hang on, two 90-day extensions, December 10, 2020. And then we had to consider another reapproval, which occurred on May 13, 2021. And still going through the premises here, the reapproval would have expired, the May 13, 2021 reapproval would have expired on June 8. So we have a little problem with the timeline ending before the full time is passed. And then the planning board's mindful of the stated reasons, this is another whereas, the planning board is mindful of the stated reasons for delays in fulfilling the conditions, and understands there have not been any project changes since December 12, 2019 approvals with conditions, or the December 10, 20 extensions were granted, or since the May 13, 2021 reapproval. And then it goes on to indicate that that reapproval was granted in May 13, 2021. And then the very first resolved, I'm changing this a little bit, and that's why I'm going into detail here. So at the bottom of May 12, at the bottom of page three, the third paragraph from the bottom is going to read, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the Kent Code Chapter 39A, freshwater wetlands, the planning board hereby grants two 90-day extensions of the May 13, 2021 reapproval, noting the previously granted two 90-day extensions of the December 12, 2019 wetland permit approval granted on December 10, 2020, and reapproval of the May 13, 2021, and that these would have expired June 8. That's why we have an odd timeline. So then the next several resolves kind of repeat that whole progression, and that's why we're kind of doing a reapproval, we're doing an extension earlier, because this would have expired before the next meeting. And let's see. Planning board grants the above-described two 90-day extensions of the May 11, May 13, 2021 reapprovals with conditions effective in running forward from June 8, 2022, so that any future expiration would occur 180 days from June 8, 2022, noting the previously granted extensions, reapprovals. And let's see, and this is new language in this resolution, that the planning board has decided they would like to include. Be it further resolved, the two 90-day extensions of reapprovals with conditions of the proposed site plan, wetland permit, and steep slope and erosion control plan approvals granted herein are subject to the following procedural conditions. One, prior to the expiration date of the first 90-day extension, the applicant and/or their representatives shall return to the planning board at a regularly scheduled meeting, and by means of written documentation, demonstrate and substantiate good faith progress in satisfying any remaining conditions of approval. The planning board in its discretion retains the right to rescind the second 90-day extension in the event that the applicant has made unsuitable progress or fails to demonstrate, in the opinion of the planning board, a good faith effort to advance the project. And just for the applicant's information, this is new language that the board has asked of all applicants that have been coming for, you know, reapprovals and extension. And then be it further resolved, these extended site plan, wetland permit, and steep slope and erosion control plan approvals are expressly conditioned upon the completion of and compliance with the following and its conditions 1 through 13, and condition 12 specifies about the 180 days. So that's it. I know it was a rather lengthy rundown, but I appreciate your tolerance, so.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions, anyone?
Yes. So we're looking for status of the project.
The sad part is, is that I was here two and a half years ago, and it feels like a black hole sucked me in, because during COVID, there was no opportunity to even think about this project. Department of Health literally closed down at the Albany level. We could not go to them to get approvals to do this project, which was so nicely granted by you, really like a couple of months before COVID. And we just, we were stuck in a black hole. They've only now reopened in the last month. So I apologize that it seems like for two years, nothing happened, but two years, almost like the Twilight Zone. And that's where we are now.
And we know that the Board of Health has been accepting applications all along.
Yeah.
They have been accepting applications all along. So I understand that there's probably a financial reason, we understand COVID, we understand the limitations of working with the Board of Health, but we want to make sure that there's good, sorry, Department of Health, we want to make sure that you're moving forward with the application, it is not just being stalled. So that's why we added that stipulation in there.
With all due respect, and I don't want to disagree with you, Department of Health, their email was not closed, but no one was looking for two years. And I know this because I had other projects and facilities that I was scheduled to buy, and there was nobody to talk to. They were not interested, Governor Cuomo was not interested, and it was literally lockdown, closed down. All we did was think about COVID, they were not interested in anything else other than that. So we are very excited now that there's an opportunity to get in front of them, get some approvals from them, so that we could go to the financial community to get the backing to do this. I'm committed to this project. This facility is antiquated by every expectation. It's not providing to the community what it should be, and when we get done with this, there will probably be about 50 to 60 people living in the building that don't live there now, the jobs that will be brought in because of that, and it will once again be a thriving, beautiful facility, not what it is now. It's not what it should be. It's not like my other facilities. Really, honestly, it's not the way it should be. I do not want to take people, take care of people in this way. My goal is to do something great at that facility.
And we're just looking for the documentation of the good faith effort on your behalf.
I'm sure Liz can get from my architect and.
No, just to make sure that you're submitting to the Department of Health, you're moving forward with the application process, the status of that. They will give you a status of the review at any time. I just want to make sure that you're moving forward on a good faith effort.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anyone else, questions? Can I get a motion to accept the resolution as described by Liz?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
And Hugo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yeah.
John Corlins?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone here from Careers? Anyone want to talk about Careers, or are we done with that?
Yeah, they're just requesting the escrow.
The next two are very simple. Careers is asking for a return of their escrow. I think the only one that actually worked on it was Liz. I don't think Bruce and I had any billings on it at all. I think Liz has gotten her bills in, and if Vera, so Vera knows what's required. Alls we would like to do is be author, alls we would like you to do is authorize Vera to return the escrow, once all the bills have been satisfied.
Okay. Can I get a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
And Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
All my members have disappeared.
Yes.
I vote aye.
Hugo? And I vote aye, too.
Okay. And with Heritage, Heritage, as you all know, had pulled their application. In pulling their application, they asked for any unexpended funds to be returned to them, and it's the same deal. I think my final invoice is in, I think Bruce's final invoice is in, Liz has probably provided an estimate. Here again, what we're asking for is your authorization to return any remaining funds.
I think they're in the negative. They're in the negative, so we're not, yep, so we can't release anything, they owe us money.
Okay, so.
So we don't have to do anything.
Okay.
I.
If there's any funds left, I make a motion to return it.
And a second?
I'll second.
And Stephen, how do you vote?
I.
Dennis?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too.
Sorry, I didn't realize they were in the negative. I looked at.
Yeah, I think of the email. The email says it.
Could be 400 and strange or something like that.
And news working below the line.
I'm sorry.
You're not the only one, so.
It's the corner.
Well, you were gone. It was twice.
Don't do it twice.
Good evening again. Below the Line, Flintlock Storage. As we described at the workshop, we did make a field visit, we being Bruce. we did make a field visit, we being Bruce and myself, Alain, along with alternate member Jackie. And we were met with the applicant and their engineer. We, we went through a whole series of issues, the predominant one being the wetlands. And they're looking into that. During the course of that, they did indicate that they had kind of resolved the access easement issues and other things. So, and, and they're looking at moving toward completing most of our comments. We're anticipating a resubmission. I don't think they're going to make that resubmission until the wetland issue is, is resolved in their minds. And they have engaged the soil scientists. So they're, they're actively pursuing this. And after making the site visit, I think both and I, both Bruce and I are convinced that it may not be doable in the exact form that they have presented it, but I think there's a potential for a project to be there, providing the wetlands are, are not that bad. Kent Manor. We have been successful in setting up a meeting among the various players at the town. I haven't heard yet from the chairman, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'll be able to make it.
Okay. But what it is, is we're having a meeting with Jeff Battistoni, your attorney, Nancy Tegliaferro, who is the town board's attorney, Bruce Barber, Bill Walters will be there, myself, and Supervisor McGlason. So what we're trying to do is.
What is it, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday at 10:00 AM, sir, at the supervisor's office.
He may show up instead.
What we're trying to do is get everybody on the same page. I was successful in getting a full set of site plan drawings with some supporting documentation from their engineer. So there's a lot of substance here, but there's a lot of moving pieces yet.